Tomorrow. What hell again, so we picked the day and then said, and in March we're expecting like not surprised. None of it was surprising, but.
Wow. There you go, give me, I mean, being as young as you and being a grandfather. Just like, I'm my, my god. Great, nothing there to talk your, your grandkid up the old and.
Yeah, it's a prosperity.
Unlike me, I'm gonna be what seventy and.
I'm gonna be.
Yeah, whatever, I'm just getting grand dogs.
I'm never.
Greatly, that wasn't announced, they probably have reservations though.
Did I do? Hello.
Looking at Kathy, looking at her. If I, if I, I've got to say words.
Oh.
The hair is there.
What's going on?
Work second.
Why is that there?
I'm all roll.
Yeah, you are. You're setting an precedence.
I know.
Yeah.
That's a breaking thing to do.
Then people start expecting and saying.
Yeah. When I get.
I certainly do, thank you.
Alex, why is like, what's going on? The owl not? Why is it just me? Throw away.
The owl's not one.
Right, but why?
Amanda. The owl. Yeah, what about that? It's not, it's not turning off. I see a light.
Oh, I do too. Did I not? Well, it did a long time ago.
And it's plugged in? Did you put that on?
Yeah.
Did you get that? Okay. It was just sitting down, baby crap. I was like, yes. And then when I was coming back. Okay, now that looks better.
Yeah.
What did you do? Oh, it's just, there's a little thing right here that. Shows video and audio and it does it on Zoom too. And then you just click this arrow up. And then you can go meeting out. Yes, I just double check it. Yes, any issues?
It's okay. Don't be a star.
Uh, I don't read people on here, right? Well, I had Lydia on here, she was staying here for two months.
That's harsh.
They have no battery.
Right now we have one of our. Women's James. Yes, I think.
Yeah, well.
All the public hearing to order.
So this is a public hearing with the. City Council. And I let the clerk call the roll. Mayor Smith here. Deborah Adams is absent, Aaron Hansen is absent, Casey Kinsman.
Here.
Mike Mickelson is absent, Wendy Rainey here, Kathy Sherman here, Dave Zastro.
Here.
That's formal council. Yeah, so we're here for a public hearing regarding ordinance one, two, three, two. And ordinance of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, amending. Cordova Municipal Code Section six point one, two point zero, four, zero dash exceptions. To allow the city manager to authorize use permits. To accept special events held at the ski hill from the provisions of six point one, two. Point zero, three, zero alcoholic beverages consumption in public places. And we can also take comment on ordinance one, two, three, three. And ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, amending Cordova Municipal Code Section four point one, six point zero, five, zero. Residency requirement. To replace city limits with. Greater Cordova area and to clarify and further define residency. Anybody want to comment on? Your exceptions or the. Special events. Use permits or the residency requirement in city code? Rushing the table, okay? Uh, I guess we can recess for a little bit until. Two more folks show up. Okay, yeah. We don't have anybody. Now speaking online. You want to unmute us or not? That'll be good idea. Always. Just. Cause Greg's crying, so Sylvia is coming too. Did I turn it off? Alright, we're unmuted now. Unmuted, unmuted.
But that's when I work.
Absolutely, that's what she said too.
By calling me loop?
Yeah. Thank you, you know, I'm modest too.
Yeah.
Hey. Do I close it out?
That's a lot of money that.
Yeah. Well, do you want to close this out? Oh, right. Of that. I was already, I moved on. Okay. So we come back into, come back from our recess for the public hearing. And um. Just checking that there are no audience comments to be made on ordinance. One, two, three, two about. Exceptions for special events held up at the ski hill. Or ordinance one, two, three, three. Amending the Cordova Municipal Code to. Replace the phrase city limits with the phrase greater Cordova area with regard to residents. Defining residency in town. Any comments on either of those two ordinances? Okay, hearing them, then we will adjourn the public hearing. And we will move on to. The order, the regular council meeting of August sixth. And will you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag. May I ask the states of America and to the republic of Sam's. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Uh, will the clerk call the roll please? Mayor Smith here. Deborah Adams is absent, Aaron Hansen is absent, Casey Kinsman.
Here.
Mike Mickelson is absent, Wendy Rainey here, Kathy Sherman here, Dave Zastro.
Here.
That's formal council. Great, thank you. And so we've got, um, have the regular agenda before us. Are there any amendments? Protifications to be made? Hearing, no objection, both consider the agenda approved. Um, disclosures of conflicts of interest and ex parte communication, does anybody have any? Conflicts of interest to declare? Parte communications? Not even anything? We can move on to communications by and petitions from visitors. I don't think we have any of the speakers lined up. Are does the, are there folks in the audience who want to make a comment on an agenda item? And. Uh, is it on an agenda item? Yeah, if you want to talk on the, yeah.
I have three minutes left.
Yes.
Sure. I mean, it doesn't time, I guess.
Yeah. That's right, went a little faster than we thought. Yeah, I think you state your name and address for the record.
Sure, uh, Shay Bowman, physical address.
Yeah.
Uh, five point five mile Power Creek Road. And then. Uh, Shay Bowman, and I work for Roll Cap, so I'm here tonight representing them. Uh, some of you know me from working at Copper River Watershed Project with Kristen on recycling programs and other things like that. Um, but tonight I'm here to represent Roll Cap as their community development specialist with the housing department. And I recently joined their having team and we are focusing on housing solutions that strengthen Alaskan communities. Um, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about Roll Cap and who we are. Roll Cap is a statewide nonprofit that has supported rural Alaskans for over fifty years. In my role, I help communities. Across the state of Alaska access resources that support housing development and long-term stability. Tonight, I'm here to help introduce two exciting opportunities that we believe could. Benefit Cordova and that we hope to pursue in partnership with the city and other local organizations. So the first program is the self-help housing program. Uh, Roll Cap facilitates this program using grant funding from the USDA Rural Development Grant and. Uh, this program supports working families who are willing to contribute sweat equity towards building their homes. Uh, Roll Cap provides training, coordination, technical assistance, and construction oversight. Um, through the USDA, they offer horrible mortgages. Through section. By O two loans with the USDA. Um, and Roll Cap acts as a loan publisher, publisher and originator. So for the program, families work together under guidance to construct their homes. Saving on construction costs while building, building the sense of ownership and community. We at Roll Cap believe this model, model could be a great fit for Cordova, especially for local residents who are ready to sell down. Or move from low income or temporary housing, but can't find housing within reach. The other grant that is of interest is the Rural Professional Housing Development Grant. This grant is funded by the Alaska Housing Finance Corporation and is intended. To help communities build housing for essential professionals. Like teachers, healthcare workers, and public authorities. Who often face barriers to finding stable year-round housing in rural communities. So with this funding, Cordova could work with Roll Cap to plan, design, and construct multi-family or shared housing. For the professionals who keep our town running. My goal tonight is just to help open the conversation for Cordova and potentially collaborate with the city. Local organizations and residents to determine the best path forward for Cordova's long-term housing needs. Thank you for your time and I'd be happy to follow up with more information or answer any questions as this moves forward. And I've also got some cards with my contact info, if anybody wants them.
Yeah, why should we leave them? If you leave them all here.
Sure. Thanks. Alright, thank you.
Do we have anyone else who wants to make some, um, audience comments about agenda items? Okay. Then. We. Um, next to chairpersons and representatives of boards and commissions. Want to? Yeah, speak for them. An update on the CCM scene.
I, I haven't been here in a bit to give that hospital update, um, I wanted to. Just come and give you all a quick update. The summers are always busy, this one's been particularly busy. Which it's not that we hope for that at the hospital, because we certainly don't, but it's good for revenue. Um, I've had the opportunity to work a lot with our emergency responders here in Cleveland. It's important, I think, for us all to remember how much time people on call put into keeping our community safe. I really appreciate how committed and professional they are. It's awesome. So, right now the hospital is. Doing good, we're right on track for our budget for the year and that's exciting. I got notice a week ago that we are in, in the congressional appropriations bill, it's out of committee. Not approved. But we're in for three million dollars for the hospital for. Improving the infrastructure for capital and then also help us plan for future, um, construction and, and. IT systems, so it's really exciting news for us because we have, we're still behind in our capital and our facility improvement. So, we're really looking forward to being able to do that. We keep show, the hospital keeps being mentioned on social media regarding the fact that we have. Some employees that work off site. Um, I'll tell you over the last five years of me being in this role. One of the things I've found is the institutional knowledge at the hospital over the past couple decades. It's just lost, it's really hard to keep that institutional knowledge. And it's been really hard to prepare, to repair some of the things that we've found as there's so much turnover and things aren't counted over. I mean, twenty twelve, we. The city manager at the time took a position out of hers and that wasn't communicated to the hospital, it wasn't communicated in the, like. Through the transitions of, um, leadership and the people that are paying the bills and. We have a outstanding budget of somewhere in the ballpark of five hundred thousand dollars from this lack of communication, which is. It's frustrating, it's hard and, and we're going to work with the state to manage it. But that institutional knowledge is really. Something that has been hard to recover from not having it. One of the ways that we have repaired that at the hospital is by having some people work remote. We prefer to have people working for Cordova, that's always, always our preference. There have been times where we'll have a certain skill set, say our CFO, that's moving. And so we will contract with them. We were able to successfully have our CFO work remote for out while they trained a local resident to then step into that role. So having that latitude to be able to do that has been instrumental in us really trying to turn the hospital around. I just wanted to make sure that there was that awareness for you guys. Um, glad to answer any questions.
It's just the biggest thing with the budget, you said you're on track. You're, you're on track with the, with your projected budget.
Yeah, so we project our budget out to have a net zero, no loss. And so right now we are actually a little bit ahead on our budget, which is.
I was just thinking, because your. Revenue, probably have more revenue when there are fewer people in town during the summer, so. So this is going to be a bigger.
So, so this point in the year, we're usually at a little bit of a net loss, but we have less of a net loss than we expected to have to be at zero. It's a good place to be.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Anybody else from? Boards and commissions? See, see staff? New audience? Alright, so, um. That brings us to the consent calendar. So, take the roll on the consent calendar, unless anybody's pulling anything. Um, no. Um, on the consent calendar, Dave Zastro.
Yes.
Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
Casey Kinsman.
Yes.
Wendy Rainey.
Yes.
The consent calendar is booked. Okay, um. We don't have any minutes, we don't have any bids or proposals or contracts, we have reports of officers coming next, so. Uh, for the mayor's report, I. Just was focusing on the one issue of, um. A little bit of what Shay just talked about with housing and the possibility of. Working with Roll Cap, um, and this mostly came up in the context of the notice that the university put out, the proposed disposal and development plan for. Uh, thirty-two acre parcel that it owns up in the Whiskey Ridge subdivision. And. When Shay and I talked, we were thinking, um, is there a possibility of? Working with Roll Cap for them to. Put in bid for part of that thirty-two acres, not the whole thirty-two acres, but part of it. To do something like the self-help, the mutual self-help program and recruit for applicants. So that's. Why Shay came and spoke, because we're. Looking at, can we start to build a working relationship with Roll Cap and what would that mean? And I'm happy to answer any questions, I think the main. Message, I, I met with staff, we talked with, uh, Sam. And Kevin and Amanda about it, and I think you all are going to. Have a. Next.
We met with them.
Was that?
I might just skip to, we met with Roll, I'm sorry. The state.
Okay.
Yeah, so when there's a little bit of a summary, I might just get put it on your. Because you weren't there. So I'll update on that.
Okay.
During the line, I guess we could get to talk to them, so.
Yeah. And so then there was some thinking that this, um. And we can talk about their certain pending agenda maybe if the city wants to hear more from Roll Cap. And, and hear from their staff and, and get to know them a little bit and understand more about their programs and what it would mean. For them to be able to work with us, but the, um, the message from Roll Cap is they aren't going to. Move ahead with any of this without some kind of a, uh, invitation or the expression of interest from the city, so. I wanted to. Get this kind of out on the table or at least on the calendar so people were thinking about it and Sam's going to talk a little bit about what they learned from the state and the. Comment deadline. Or the university landmark rules, I think, is the twenty-second, yeah, so that's. And the comment deadline for the university land approvals, I think, is the twenty-second. Yeah, so that's coming up. So that's my report. Um. I did also write an article that I submitted to the Cordova Times, uh, just about the waterfront land use planning that we've been doing. It was just kind of a summary of what we've um, done so far, but I just thought, you know, there are some people, a lot of people who came to the meeting, but a lot of people who didn't. So it was just sort of a way, another way to reach out to folks and let them know what the process that we're following. Was it in the paper already? Um, I just sent it to her on Monday, so I don't know if it's been posted.
It'll be in this week's.
Yeah. And it may be posted online, I'm not sure. Yeah, so happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, there's a couple of basic questions about Rulcap, and I'll talk to them. I'm sure I could find it on my own, but um, you had written in your report six to twelve participants.
For the self-help program.
Yeah, is that, so it's a number of homes that have to be built. So is that at least two or more, or what's, what's the number of homes that would have to involve?
Six to twelve.
Six to twelve homes?
Yeah.
Not part, because part business means home supply.
Or households.
Yeah.
I mean, six to twelve households, so it could be one person, it could be a couple, it could be a family of four. Yeah, but they need a bit, they like to have a minimum of six to be able to do it, and they um because Rulcap wants to have site control of the property, that they, and, and then they arrange all the financing, they coordinate all of the um, like if you have to put in an access road, if you have to do utilities, they help do all of that. And they also have some preset designs. I think you can choose between, I think there might be three or four designs you can choose from. The maximum square footage is fifteen hundred square feet for a home and um, and the applicants have to go through a review process and, and uh, they, you know, get a credit check done and that kind of stuff, yeah.
Is there a time limit, so many years to get the home built?
Um, well, nobody moves into the home, any of the homes until they're all done here. So everybody's got an incentive to make sure it happens as quickly as possible. Yeah. But I'm sure there's like a construction loan timeline. Yeah, did you want to?
I was also gonna say, um, Rulcap doesn't have availability to take on a new community until twenty twenty-seven, but it's gonna take like two years of planning to even get to that point. So if we want to be that community for twenty twenty-seven, we need to start talking with Rulcap like now. Which is why I'm, yeah, I'm crazy. And then, yeah, nobody moves into their homes, like I just said.
Okay. Okay.
Sure. So, yeah, I'm happy to answer. Questions, is there anything else?
Right, just need to forward what's pending agenda discussion.
Okay. Yeah. If anyone can see the manager's report.
Okay.
Light down, maybe it's not on.
Okay, I just have a couple of updates. Got a written report in the um packet. I would like to thank the show committee, because that is a pretty impressive document, but I'm sure hurting all those cats and making that happen was a lot of work, and it's, it's very well done. Um, also, um, Susan, Samantha and Kevin, if you have any questions on, on their updates, they would be here to answer questions. I'll go over the jobs a little bit. Um, Sydney Bellin, Chris uh, is who accepted the Cordova center position. She'll be starting May eighteenth. The finance director's name is Charles Donard. He will be at the August twentieth meeting, so you all will get to meet him and have some chats with him. He'll be here for two weeks right off the bat. Um, and we're still in that interview process for the communication works and D and B. Um, I did give you this written update on our meeting uh, with the Alaska Land Management um, group, thanks to Amanda. We did an amazing job, right? Yeah. Uh, so we did meet with them. This project is at the very beginning of the deal. They have to do a thirty-day comment before it goes to the board to get approved. So this project isn't as of yet approved. So we can provide written comments. I would offer that staff could write a resolution of support if council would like that to have it. Pass it at the twentieth meeting, we can have it in before the end of the deadlines. There is some live, there's some um, opportunities to actually do some um live stream public comments as well. So I guess Susan, that'll be upcoming agenda to do that.
Sure.
Okay, we, you ready?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, good. Um, so things like that, unless somebody has some questions on anything.
Uh, you said in your report that um, you met with the covered spaces, uh, told?
I did, and, and I met with Natasha, Bill, and Dottie. And they just kind of got me up to speed because I hadn't really been involved in that. Um. And we talked for a while down at the site, and then today, actually Samantha, Tony, and I met, and Kevin. Uh, we talked about a few things. We reported back to um, the covered spaces. The covered spaces are getting their building conceptual drawing, which is a bit different than what was rendered the first time. Finalized, um, they would like to move forward with getting that into an contractor, an engineer to get some construction grade drawings. Um, and we have some ideas of how, you know, what, where it's gonna look, how it's gonna look on the ground. Where, where we put some stakes in, so people can see where the building will be. They're gonna have some kind of event in the fall, so that we know it's public, you know, we can see that we're moving forward. So we talked about adding another road parking in the harbor parking area there. There's a very large road space. So we're gonna work through that, Kevin and Tony, you'll be on that, G I S, and then on the ground. And but we, we did get back to them, so we're, we're just gonna keep working with them and I don't know whatever they come up with.
That's great. Glad to see progress of happening.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty exciting. There's some good ideas, and I think, you know, it's good locations. We did, oh no, we can paint the movie. So we can have your idea, I mean, you know, I think that would be great. They were pretty excited about that. We just haven't really you know, where, how, but because they're involved in from your employees. So the idea is to paint the movie that says Cordova, Alaska, right? And it's all that long, and it's artistic font, and yeah. I don't think he's coming out, but maybe we have some artists that are.
Maybe you have artists, maybe in this community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so that would be fun.
Anywhere where it's such a concentration of artists.
Yeah.
That's fun. Yeah, wonderful.
Other than questions for the manager?
Your report's great. Have you read it? Answer my questions and the pool's a little disheartening, but makes you know small, but not here saying, oh, you're bold, it's not, it's just
sad.
It's sad. Disheartening.
Yeah.
You have one question on the, on the um uh, the uh, public work report. Is that something that you was?
I would ask Kevin to answer that question.
Yeah. It's a pretty basic, simple question, Kevin. I'm just curious, uh, obviously, we're gonna be getting rain tomorrow, which we're all gonna love, I'm sure, after all the hot weather. We're gonna rain for a couple of days. Exactly. That was one of my questions I had on conservation. I'm just curious, asking the processors to go through some conservation efforts. What kind of efforts is it significant? But if you know more about that than I do, um.
Yeah, so they, in two thousand nineteen, they actually re uh, plumbed some of their um, water where they, because they can use saltwater on the floor. There are some places that they can use saltwater, but they have to use treated water in, on the line and anywhere. They're so kind of uh, used that's associated with the fish. So they did that in two thousand and nineteen. Um. It's hard for them, even when they shut down, you know, when you see the cannery guys out walking around and stuff. There's still water being used because they have to get those lines cleaned and moving and, um. But they've done that, and they continue to work on that, save them money as well. So that was the big one for the cannerys.
Would they rather use treated water instead of saltwater for the floors, or do they?
I don't know. I think, I don't know, I don't think that they went back to treated, but I'm not sure. They just have rules where they can't use saltwater. They actually have to retest their water. They take our tests and then they have to do another test for T. I don't see. So it's pretty strange.
Well, yeah, that's good. Significant user of water, so any kind of conservation efforts they can make, we're proud of being appreciated.
Yeah, and Kevin has reached out to them and talked with them, same thing we did in two thousand and nineteen. They're aware. They think to understand and try to work with us. It's really, they usually respond to your emails and there you go.
Thank you.
Right.
I have one question, but I'll just take our fine. I missed the first time, but for the state's cabinet update, so the uh, fundraising so far has gotten, has raised half the money needed for the demolition. Is that the?
That's they finished the thing, yes.
Okay. That's great. Okay. Anybody else, any other?
Just say thank you for the chips to work. And ultimately, everyone's seeing it, and the community's seeing it, because I would love, and the community, they would love to see it on the budget next year, so. No, thank you. It's good, it's no small effort.
No.
Good smell of weather to help out.
Long term.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's great.
Just now getting folks trained on it, so I wanna continue that.
Yeah, it is a complicated process. It's a lot of coordination.
Stop and watch. I guess I'd like to leave one other comment about the harbor. The drive-down dock is amazing. Even as a, as a sport user of the harbor, I use it all the time, so, but that's a pretty amazing resource right now. Yeah, it's all the difference now that we use that, our harbor down there.
Okay, well, maybe then we move on to the city clerk's report. Um, I was gone for a while, so I'm just catching up, and then I'll let handle things while I'm gone, I appreciate that, and um, that's all I have to report. Um, so we also have staff reports, the second quarter staff reports, um, the harbor and port. Do folks have any questions about that or comments? Please. Yes, that's my thing.
You can make it come up here.
I'm just curious, how much water did we lose in those water leaks? How long were they going on?
Uh, I don't know a hundred percent how long they were going on, like the, the pipe didn't completely separate over there, so just the flange kind of split open, but it was too much either way.
Yeah, I, I had some of my guides say they saw some bubbling coming out. They weren't sure if it was supposed to do that.
No, it's not supposed to do that. Someone said they saw the day before, and I was like, well, why didn't you say this to us? So, yeah.
Okay.
I honestly don't know. It's only a six-inch line, so how much could come out?
Okay, yeah.
Just get put a faucet.
Yeah, it took three days for Andy Perry to fix it, so.
Oh, wow, yeah, shut up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did you want to say something, Samantha? Oh. You're in here. Um, okay. Well, then. So the next um, part of the agenda is correspondence. There's a number of items in there, there. Yeah, there's the D and R notice about a non-competitive sale, competitive title lands lease, non-competitive title lands lease. There's my letter about the very comments, very scheduled comments, the UAA notice about the development and disposal plan. I have a thank you card from the last of twenty twenty-five, so does anybody have any comments or want any follow-up action on any of these items? No, but great honor to run higher system, hopefully don't answer your questions. We'll see. Some thank you. Sure. Okay, well, I think we'll hear more about the Whiskey Ridge. We did hear about the Whiskey Ridge subdivision, um. Okay. Why don't we proceed to ordinances and resolutions? So ordinance one, two, three, two. Anyone want to make a motion?
May I say?
Yes, councilwoman, be sure then.
I remove, um, I forgot the right one. I remove um, ordinance twelve thirty-two, the ordinance of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, amending Cordova municipal code section six point one, two point zero four zero exceptions to allow the city manager to authorize use permits to accept special events held at Ski Hill from revisions of six point one, two point zero three zero alcoholic beverages consumption in public places.
So.
So moved and seconded. Councilmember Sherman.
Yes, we've discussed this at, at length. This is a um San Jac has become pretty much a steadfast event, and this makes it a lot easier for the organizers um, to perceive. Um, there are timing matters in all regards of events, and this is just another one that would assist them. And I, I just will emphasize once again, it does not mean that they do not get a alcohol permit from the state board. Um, this just means they don't have to go through the process of a s- city council meeting to prove that.
Councilmember Kinsman.
Yeah, nothing further to add. Thank you. It's a great, great idea, great event, so obvious.
Other comments? Members? Um, hearing no further discussion, let's vote.
This will call on our final adoption. Okay, so on ordinance twelve thirty-two, Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
Casey Kinsman.
Yes.
Wendy Rainey. Yes. Dave Zastro.
Yes.
Barry Sporzy.
Right. Now come to ordinance one, two, three, three.
Yes, councilwoman Rainey. I move to uh, move the ordinance one, two, three, three, and ordinance of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, amending Cordova municipal code section four dash sixteen dash zero five zero residency requirement to replace city limits with greater Cordovita area and to clarify and further define residence.
You're second?
I'll second.
Moved by Rainey and seconded by Sherman, councilmember Rainey, speak to that.
Um, I just think this gives us options. I mean, we can still set requirements for certain positions that need to be, um, that we feel need to be, uh, filled by local personnel, but this gives us the opportunity to bring in some help for the police department, um, to bring in some other folks uh, that may want to look at suddenly outside the city limits, and I don't really see an issue with this.
Councilmember Sherman.
Sure, um, again, we've discussed this at length, but um, I would just add to councilman Rainey's comments that um, it's not just our community that's looking at options for things like this. Um, it's many other communities within the state that are looking at um changes in scheduling, um, off-site.
Changes in scheduling, um, off-site remote work, um. Just trying to entice. People, there's a great article on public media about. Definitely, I think it was bringing it, uh, they have a policeman who. Commutes from Australia. You know, so, I mean.
Or had.
Had, yeah, I think he's done now, but, um, yeah, anyway, it's not just our problem, um, and I. Commend the police department for doing everything they have been doing under schedule, and also the city manager and human resources for trying to find. People to fill our positions, because it's not just our problem, it's everywhere in states. Um, I'm in support of this.
Comments from councilmembers?
Um, yes, I might. Do we know, and I'll ask you Sam, you can defer to whoever or whomever you'd like, you know, when was the last time the police department was fully staffed?
Last time the police department was fully staffed was in twenty seventeen.
So, um, for any comments that are out there and wondering why we're exploring this option, twenty seventeen. That was the last time our police department was fully staffed, and at that time it was staffed at a different number and. So we've been trying that long in various forms and ways to get. To get its staff here for our police department. This is an avenue that allows us to have. So I just think that's important to know that these. These men and women, just fantastic, see now, um. They're on, when they're on, they're on, when they're off, especially right now when they're not staffed, they're still on. And so then, just want to make sure that's really hitting the community. It hits me, I definitely. I'm human, I'll take it for granted for sure. I do like to take those pauses and I'm grateful for what. And especially as we're talking police department, we get this through. Um, so definitely in support of this, but wanted to get some numbers out there for the public.
I'm good. I concur with everything that you've said and all that there.
All right, well, then this also, I think we'll take a rule call for X. On adoption of twelve thirty three, Casey Kinsman.
Yes.
Dave Zastro.
Yes.
Wendy Rainey.
Yes.
Kathy Sherman.
Yes.
Motion Garrett four zero. We can pay, then we come to, uh, resolution zero eight dash two five dash two, all right? Resolution of the council of the city of Cordova, Alaska, adopting the city of Cordova comprehensive trails plan twenty twenty five. Wrong looking.
I don't know that I should bring it forward.
Wait, I missed it. Who did it? And Wendy second?
American design.
Uh, Councilmember Kins.
Yes, um, fantastic, thorough, great work, and I think it was already said. That's comprehensive and can only imagine the amount of work and energy and effort went to actually put that document where it is now and. A lot of coordination, a lot of collaboration, so. Fantastic, fantastic. Absolutely, I'm in support of this. It's nice having something this easy to support. It absolutely is, absolutely. And yeah, I don't want that to be like this is easy to support, meaning to dismiss it. No, this is wonderful. It's all very laid out, very well. So, thank you.
Councilmember Randy.
Hi. It was a pleasure working with folks on this, and I think I loved before it was finished, and I think they did a great job bringing it in. It's all that.
Councilmember Sherman.
Yeah, just kudos, 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 very impressive, um, and I think it's. Long overdue and great to have.
Yeah, I was really impressed with, I mean, the whole trail inventory is. Terrific and to have all these figures to back up each and every trail, but I loved reading just the whole. Um, the introduction, you know, the history of trails, the history of like transportation and pathways in the, in the region, and it was such a great. Um, bit of setting in context for the role that trails play and how they have been part of transportation for centuries. Not just the modern hiking there.
Yeah.
Comment on.
Sure, sure. I, I was glad it was a huge effort by a lot of people, uh, um. MPS was a huge aid in getting this over the finish line. We had a lot of ideas that are in committee. Over many years, so as you know, Mayor, you were involved in the early, early, uh, efforts of our.
Yeah, I don't think you got any model release.
What's that?
I didn't get any model release.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, we, we need to get that for me, that's true, and some others, maybe. But, um, yeah, a huge amount of public effort too. Uh, we had multiple public meetings and. Opportunities for the public to provide what they felt they should entail. So it's everybody's effort, everybody's, um, you know, success. Yeah, it was, it was a real pleasure working with everybody to get this by once.
Add to our, to the. Body of knowledge about public resources, and I've always thought that the trails, you know, that we, that's something we could market more as. Terms of recreation and what's available, I was just, those are incredible world-class trails.
I mean, yeah, I can't not, being from here relatively new, that was one thing that was very impressive. But how are these, how do these trails exist with a town of twenty five hundred people, like that's where my brain. Living in other places and accessibility, how close it, fantastic, definitely not there. It's just one question I. Maybe we can get an answer to is where's this going to live? Where can people come find this besides? The end of this packet.
So it's a parks and rec document, so it will live on their public face and site feature. Um, and then it will be used for fundraising. That's basically a huge part of how we're going to get money to do a lot of the projects we're proposing to get done. And leveraging, uh, funding through other, um, entities, federal entities, state entities, corporations, you know. Their efforts to want to see trails and create more trails out there, so.
It's fantastic. I think it can also maybe get listed on the city's website under that land use planning. Sure, section, I mean, that seems, that's a good, uh.
Document central.
Yes, yeah, well, there's one place where it's got like the comprehensive plan and the Southfield plan. And I think this would be. Nice for us too. Great. Um, well. Thank you so much for the work and moving it forward to get us here, and I think with that, we can. Take a voice vote, all those in favor of the. Adopting the city of Cordova comprehensive trails plan of twenty twenty five, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed just don't say anything. Um, yeah, or some guesses.
Can you use that more often?
We don't have any unfinished business, we, that takes us to pending agenda. And.
So I'd like to, with the new, um. Verbiage of city limits in greater Cordova area, I think it's time that we. Start having a conversation about annexing. The end of White Shed Road and the potential for, I know I'm going to say it out loud, Sam, don't, don't, don't look at me like that. A rural conversation, um, only because we have. Construction at the end of White Shed Road. We have construction opportunities that are going to happen out Shepherd Point Road when that is done. The village has already been talking about. Selling property out there, um. There's Boswell Bay, I mean, there's a lot of opportunities for the greater Cordova area, and I think we need to, I know that the annex. Procedure is costly and time-consuming, and I think it needs to be a conversation started. So, and that's two different things, so I'd like to start a conversation about annexing White Shed. But those other things will fall into, you know, down the road, it's a big possibility, it's a big procedure to annex something. And we don't want to annex that and then have to turn around and annex another. Area, so I think it all falls together in the bigger conversation of is annex what we want to do and how do we incorporate? Those greater Cordova area citizens into Cordova.
If you got the people who did the trash, maybe you can do it.
Yeah.
They're so motivated.
Take seven year.
I think we could use sort of informational stuff, but this is about to be led in. It is a huge, huge project. Lawyers, it is super intensive. So some information like difference between annex and a borough, you know, those are some things that we could talk about, but as far as. Moving forward with any kind of real. Documentation or lawyer work or whatever it takes.
There's also been, well, there was quite a borough study.
Yep.
Um, already done by community quite a few years ago now, and then possibly they annexed. For, so there's all that history as well too, so I think maybe bringing that information to the table would be. Or two, I would just be useful.
That's kind of what I was after, I mean, the conversation should be had. It should be started, and then we can decide that, okay, that's not, we can't go that route right now, but it, it is something we should at least talk about if we're looking at.
How do we want it on pending agenda?
Started as just information.
Informational learning about.
Like bring the, the process from the past annexes forward, and I know, I did read that. Whole borough thing that went down before, I'd like to just see that document again, I have no idea where I said it.
I, I don't know about when was the thunder in.
Well, but then we had another one was late, you know.
That was, yeah.
Oh, the annexation was. A early nineties, but it didn't take effect at all the lawsuits and everything were done by ninety seven, I think. Is when.
We couldn't do it in odds.
I'm thinking it's at least a work session.
Uh, look, yeah, let's, let's look at it and see what we think and then maybe we can. Either bring it, uh, an idea to the next meeting or, I don't know.
At least a, a very basic framework.
Because yes, don't forget. I will have a calendar out soon.
Thank you. Thank you for not throwing anything at me.
It was close. Definitely was your be mine.
Yeah. I was strategic.
Um, have any thoughts about, um. I guess I want to ask the question, would, uh, would the council be open to hearing from Rome, Kath?
Yes, I don't mind if there's any harm in here for that.
To be the guest speaker of the August twentieth council meeting, okay.
I would really appreciate that.
Then I guess I would just, where we have the support for the subdivision, I know it's kind of its own separate thing, current common period, we need just direct staff to work on that.
And you said a resolution of support, maybe well put together for that August twentieth.
I just want to make sure that was. Understood, we'll take all the potential, all the potential that's out there.
And. You're, you're also working on comments around. Things that you would want to see happen in a subdivision if they.
Not now, because right now it's just supporting, all they're looking for is public support to, to move forward.
Okay, okay.
And then, uh.
So then later you'll talk about.
Yes.
Make sure they offer snow dumps.
After it's all been through their process of the board meeting, that's kind of outlined here, and then they'll be in touch with us.
So do, just do we even want to see this happen or even? The work happening, we should invite. Sure, and, and for him, and we were.
Work session then, instead of just the presentation and very council.
Probably, yeah, actually, I, I, because I had thought about the N Z and thank you.
Yeah, good point.
Okay. Um, we don't have a public hearing on the twentieth. So that works. Since a law, work session. Yeah, that's probably.
And then invite the N Z.
Yes, you want work session with the N Z or just invite them to attend a work session?
Just.
Invite the system.
We will check with shade in our bunch.
Great. Anything else for pending agenda? More really weighty topics. We think.
No, those are all good.
Yeah.
How about that, except for the.
Well, I'm just looking in the mirror, read my memories, consider changes. No, that doesn't matter, we'll hear this one.
And then we know the budget cycle is coming up, so. Okay, great. All right, um. So that means. That we come to council comments. I'm sorry, no, no, I'm sorry, audience participation, the moment. Some people have been waiting for, so, um, if there are folks in the audience who want to come forward and speak on an item. Regarding city business, we'd like to come forward and we offered three minutes per person if you want to come.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to the council. My name's Abe Bruce Kiederman. Um, I've been a resident in Cordova from nineteen forty nine to nineteen seventy and for the last thirteen years. Um, I am presently representing the, uh, Townhouse Association, uh, that's. Uh, described as Lake Avenue Townhouse. I live in six oh five Lake Avenue, number twenty. I know the city just changed that number, so, um, I'm familiar with that. I'm here to address the issue of the status of Seventh Street. Um, particularly with the, uh, curb and gutter issue. And the potential re-reservicing of that, that street. Let me give you a little background on that. The situation now is erosion in all our properties from the Coast Guard facility all the way down to Lake Avenue. Our, uh, bribe ways are being eroded, some more than others, and it's starting to become a cost. Uh, issue where we have to replace the, uh, the ground. The other thing is, um. If it should be iced up, is that also, um. Is an issue particularly in the winter time, and that's the reason why I'm here today. Uh, we, we have a. Weather situation coming up, uh, for the next several months, it's cold silver season, and when that comes to bad weather. So, we'll see a lot more, uh, drainage issues on our properties. Uh, which are being damaged, uh. At, at unbearable, uh, stats for our, uh, townhouse residents. The city had, um, agreed with the, uh, Coast Guard to fix their drainage water issue, uh, when they first developed it. And when they had a problem, they went and fixed that, and each time it resulted in more drainage on our properties because we're on the downside. So, uh, the question might have, what my constituents have are. What is the city doing about it? When is it going to be addressed and how can we help you? I'm open to questions.
Seven Streets, that entrance were into like, uh.
Please forgive me, I'm a senior, so I'm hard to hear.
Seven Streets, the entrance that takes you up into, like the townhouses are on either side and it goes up into the.
I don't know if anybody wants to. Respond, I don't, uh. I don't know if anybody wants to respond, I don't, uh, know, it's where that area is in, in any kind of a streets plan.
Uh, we have applied for multiple grants, you know, Seventh Street conflicted, we do, just maybe maintenance on that road, it is an issue. Um, but if you don't get some sidewalks and drainage control in there, these, you're, you're just keep, you know, put a man in on it, but it's also, you know, a million plus dollar project. So it is on the list, I've talked to Bruce many times, um, you know, we, we try to do our best. I mean, we've been turning down price of the ATAP grant for Seventh Street, so.
Was that, ha- has there been any cost work done on, like, what that would look like if it was a special assessment district?
Well, there was an example when we talked about special assessments, and we certainly could bring that forward and see how the residents felt about that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the most immediate thing we could offer, it seems like.
Is there a training department or?
I don't know, I don't.
So, so could you describe to me what you mean by special assessment?
So a special assessment district is where you're putting in a piece of, uh, 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 an element of infrastructure in one neighborhood. And so you work out a, um, a, a taxation over time, you, um, amortize it over time. And the residents pay for it a little bit at a time, I think that happened when they put water. Upper Davis?
Upper Davis was paving, they did a sewer one out the highway and water.
And so you assess, uh, the cost of those improvements over fifteen years, or I don't know, but how you, you can choose the time span. So like I said, that's the most immediate thing that I think the city could offer, and, yeah, um, council member Kinsman just suggested that we check in with the native village of Iac and see if that's uh, at all included in their transportation improvement plan, or their tribal transportation plan, I guess what it's called, where they have uh, transportation priorities laid out, and they can do transportation improvements over I, I think they have to do about a five-year plan.
So here, if I hear you correctly, you're saying that the city is working with the tribe on their transportation management as part of this?
We could ask NVE, we aren't currently, we haven't specifically had a conversation with them about Seventh Street. But we could ask them, is it, is it included in your tribal transportation plan, what would it take, is that something you would consider? Yeah, so, but no, there isn't anything in the works currently.
So how have you, uh, addressed the participation of the Coast Guard in events, uh, community program?
I don't know that it's been discussed.
Uh, there, apparently there's a grand out there, but the part of events, uh, on community infrastructure, that they would help, wherever they have a military base or facility, that they would, uh, provide some money to uh, assist the community for goodwill and access to their property. But right now, seven avenues were right through ours into theirs, so, and, and the fact that they, um, helped, you might say, caused a drainage issue, they, they should, we should address them somehow to see if they can participate in this project, if that's what.
Do you have any information on that program?
I can get it.
That'd be great.
We have, uh, no, once you said what it was, I didn't recognize it, it was for, we have with that.
They, they have some also, yeah. So, the, the, uh, Townhouse Association, you know, will do anything to help you. Uh, from my background in the municipal and state government, I, I can use whatever resource I still have. But, um, sandbags and li- little ditches don't, like, that sort of can't, I'm sure none of you would want that in front of your house. I certainly don't want it in front of any of ours, particularly when there's children and elders available. Or people who are on a lower income. So you can see my dilemma. And I know this, I know I'm, I've talked to the city on several occasions. Different administrations even before you folks, and I'm still still involved, and since I'm here, I thought, well, I better, it was suggested I mouth it off here, you might say. So whatever you can, you can do, uh, please let us know what we can also help you with. So, and something needs to be done, even if something gets hurt.
Great, well, we've got a couple things we can start to get a look at.
Thank you, Bruce.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that. Other audience participation topics, yeah, please.
Good evening, I'm Cameron Hayden, uh, one sixty four, next way you wrote. Um, I just wanted to thank council personally, uh, for pushing forward with this twelve thirty three. Um, I think it's gonna be a great benefit to Cordova as a whole. Um, this is for you as well as those watching and listening at home, you might have seen the two officers that came in and sat beside me there. That's your entire police department, so uh, us looking toward, uh, creating flexible schedules and trying to entice people to come to our community and help. Um, I think it's, I think it's, uh, a look toward the future, and I think it's gonna be very beneficial, um, moving forward. So I just wanted to let you all know that I appreciate that, and that, uh, we're constantly, you know, trying to improve, and we're trying to modernize, if you will, but it takes the support of the community and the support of you all here, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Maybe halfway covered three hundred mark Railroad Avenue. Um, I just wanted to send a reference straight, uh, planning commission meeting wasn't, uh, yesterday, it's gonna be on August twelfth. That, that's all I got to do, okay.
Thank you, thank you. That was my error on the calendar. Okay, no other audience participation? All right, then we can go to council comments. Yes, council member Sherman, can we start on your side?
Sure, um, I picked on dates last time, so. Um, a lot of my comments have already been addressed tonight, but again for those of the city staff or the chip ceiling work, that was just amazing, um, force of raw work and talent, and, uh, really well received by everybody I've talked to in the public, so great. The Carson Rex stuff is gonna is just great, um. I know we're all sad about the pool and skaters town, but there's so many other good things that they're doing right now that just need to be commended on all levels, um, and I will give a shout out, uh, social media posts was one thing, but people are not picking up after their dogs, and, um, to this day, I can remember Tina Tapley coming into every city council meeting and talking to the dog group, and, um, I made a little comment about Micah getting dog stuff on his boots, and he says, just, it's what's worse is when you're weed eating and it flies into your face. I mean, just think about that, so, and the other thing I've noticed, people are putting their poop in sort of little dog bags and then leaving it in neighbors' yards, and and that's just not right, so, um, people can pick up after themselves and, and for respect all the work that I was trying to do in our community. Um, and I, I don't think I have anything else. I, I shouldn't end on dog food though. But, um, just, it's been great, um, seeing town so busy this last past week, and the sunshine and, um, activities everywhere, I have a few friends in town who used to live here who are just amazed at this place and how happy it is, you know, they still call it home, they love being back here, and, um, it's just really, it makes you appreciate living here, so.
Council member Kinsman.
Yep, um, to continue some of my other comments, I just will say thank you to our public safety. I'm glad you called it out, cuz it's, if someone hasn't noticed their community for police force, three. Just want our community to just let that sink in, that like, that's, that's what those are the three, keep me safe, on top of that, thank you, Fire EMS, I know there's other other, uh, things going on there with staffing, but right now we have our, really our volunteers taking up the breadth of that, so thank you, and, and that comes really from EMS and and, uh, the councils volunteer on-call hours, so. Yeah, and so do I volunteer, sweat stayed, and not enough, but, thank you. Um, cool on Gavin, it is, and I'll say those things too, but man, Samantha, you're doing a fantastic job preparing us for the future, cuz those are, these are issues that should have been addressed I'll say decades ago, not even just years, decades ago. So, I'm excited, it, it always stinks when it comes to head, and we have to be kind of reactive on it, but just, just trying to make it better, and I think, uh, Skaters Cabin is a perfect example there. Really looking to the future of what, uh, the potential for that one is, and my talking about people back in town, I had my son back in town, and it is just wonderful having home, see where to stop with him, he grew up here, product of at least the junior, senior high school. And, uh, just could not have asked for a better place to grow up, to just grow up here. And that's evident anytime I go and travel anywhere else, so, we live in a pretty incredible place. Like that, so, I'll also say that Cordova is a choice, and just leave there, it's a wonderful choice. May not be a choice for her, but it's a pretty wonderful choice.
Um, yeah, just, thank, thank you to EMS and the police department, I I know the sirens are going off pretty much on a daily basis lately, so I really appreciate what everybody's doing, working with that, um. I think it was, uh, a no-brainer to move forward with the, the re-re residency thing, and I just appreciate the staff, it's this time of year, it's busy, everybody's super busy, the fact that, you know, we can come together and still try to get some business done and still try to move forward is a testament to the city staff, so I appreciate you all, and I appreciate the police department, and EMS and the, and the fire as well, so I see you having the trucks out, and I, I know you're running short staffed, and it's nice to, it's nice to see that activity down there.
I gotta echo my fellow council members about, uh, EMS, police department, we have, uh, our police chief, Dr. Sanders, coming up and telling us how they feel about the ability to bring on specialized people with certifications, high levels of training, highly qualified people. And if we're unable to find them, because we're having an undue requirement on them, and we need to change that, make it, um, an environment where we are gonna get qualified people and keep them in our area in these jobs, so, it seems like a no-brainer to me to be able to do that. It's just another tool and toolbox for flexibility, so, uh, it just seems a perfectly reasonable thing to do. Um, I love all the written reports, Sam's writing written reports a lot, yeah, so that's so helpful, having something to review before we come to meeting. Um, so, uh, obviously, yeah, chip seal, sending any work out there, watching our public works, folks doing what they're doing, and not just chip seal, but, uh, going out to White Shed Road and filling all the cracks with oil, I mean, everything that's going on to make our, uh, lives a little better in our community, that's where your tax dollars are going, and it's good to see it, uh, out, out being used. Um, it's really exciting about the University of Alaska lands being available, that's a huge benefit of our community, I'm really excited about where this is gonna be.
Not available yet.
Not available yet, but there's a potential, there's a potential, yeah, a high potential we're seeing. And the different ways that we might be able to utilize that land, when, if that possibility comes up. Um, as far as the trails plan, I, I do wanna mention the folks that were involved from kind of beginning to end, um, it was, uh, Liz Seneer, Ryan Chutey, Michelle Hahn, um, who else, Tony Godis, obviously Wendy Rainey and, uh, Stormy Hot, those were the folks that were heavily involved through the entire process, and, um, that wouldn't have happened without all those folks. Many late nights, a lot of running around with trail wheels and measuring and taking photos, and, um, and, um, it was a pleasure, it was a pleasure working with those folks, it's pretty exciting now, with our next meeting, we're gonna start looking at how we're gonna use that plan and start implementing some projects, so pretty exciting vibes, thank you.
Um, I will just take the, take a minute, take the prerogative of, um, having, yeah, but I just wanted to recognize the, uh, police department and EMS folks also, and say, thanks for your help with Sam and Jam, and uh, I know you did add that on top of all the other things that you're doing, and my council member Randy said I noticed the sirens going off with alarming uh, regularity, and every time it happens, I think somebody's in trouble and someone has answered the call, so thank you for for being there and making that part of your life, and thanks for a great, for all that everybody else did, I know Stephen was a big part of it, but for, um, and I guess just a shout out to all the volunteers who helped make Sam and Jam a huge success, it was really, really great, and, uh, yeah, we had something like I tallied about a hundred runners who came from out of town to participate, and then um, Sam and Jam is just a great time, we had a bunch of local musicians, so it was really great to celebrate some of our own, um, some of our own homegrown talent, and, uh, yeah, and thanks to everybody who will make that happen, so.
It was fascinating how many people come from out of town to run, it's fantastic.
I, and, yeah. And, uh, and then, yeah, all the music, all the great live music, the kids' activities, Sam and Jam's just, uh, summer highlight. Yeah, so thanks, uh, okay, I think that's, uh, that's a wrap.